Silence for us so we don't hear any objections.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Each time a member of the public wishes to speak, you'll be granted five minutes and four minutes and thirty seconds after a very friendly, non-threatening bell here chimes. If you think that you're almost out of time, you can kind of complete your thoughts. So there's really good sit-downs, so.
Right.
First item on the agenda tonight, we have a recognition or proclamation here. So we'll go right into the consent agenda. The matter is listed, all of the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed. The consent agenda, by either a member of the commission or a member of the public, there are any items on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would want to remove, there's some objections?
No speaking.
Okay. The item the public would want to remove in the consent agenda for separate discussions. Okay, hearing, no objections to the consent agenda tonight. Additionally, what I add to the consent agenda, the payroll, one million eight hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. And vendors, many vendors, two hundred and seventy-two alone, with a amount of two million six hundred two thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Cromwell, all members say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Consent agenda carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda tonight is to receive an update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Just a few items this week. Want to recognize the work of Micah Sebold in our information technology department. Micah is our GIS coordinator, has done a lot of great work in a number of venues in regards to our work in that area. Recently got recognized for putting together a large map for our transit system. Emily Loveliner and others in the Transit Division worked on that and appreciate that national recognition. We've also got a couple of street maintenance and Street Division kind of mid-year reports, as you can see, were very active on a number of different fronts and appreciate the public's patience as we go about fixing and repairing and improving a number of our streets and other public works infrastructure. So if you have an opportunity to come in, those reports to your reading. That's all I've got, Mayor. Be happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions? We're right on the list of our agenda. First item is to conduct a public hearing, so may we should access easement located at six hundred thirteen Congressional Drive, as noted by the property owner.
This is just to give you kind of some bearings here. This is at the southwest corner of Six and Congressional. The property in question proposes a redevelopment. And I know this is a little hard to see, but there is a access easement here that was platted and in red, in blue, that was dedicated through a separate instrument. The red is what is being replat-- I mean, when the new plaque goes in, the new development, it will be replatted, rededicated. So tonight's direction is to open a public hearing. And pending your discussion, you would approve the vacation, but the vacation is basically to move this access easement for the new development, for the redevelopment. So we've contacted all the utilities and all the property owners within two hundred feet, and we've received no questions or objections.
Good. Any questions? All right. Entertaining motion of the public hearing?
So moved.
Hundred and fifty seconds. The other side, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is open. Don't look to this item. The member of the public wish to speak? Hearing now, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Cromwell?
Sir.
Amix, all members say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Six five zero. Discussion from the commission or motion?
Second.
Move Cromwell. Second court to approve. All members say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Six five zero. Next item on the agenda will be to receive an update on thirteen thirteen Haskett.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Manager for the city. I'll be briefing my comments tonight. Just to give a quick summary of how we got back here. This started originally in May of two thousand ten. We adopted a resolution with the previous owner, HRP. Haskellboro Partners is in attendance tonight. Michael Allman, Jenna Coker, Fred Sack. We brought this item back to you, May fifteenth of this year, as some of the original fifteen items that were adopted in Resolution six eight eight five were not completed. At that time, you decided to give HRP ninety additional days to come back tonight to present their progress on what they have done. Included in your agenda packet was a letter from Michael Allman that was submitted last week that identified all those fifteen items and where they were at. At the time of submitting last week for the agenda, I had not met with HRP. I did that last Friday at ten a.m. in the morning. I met Michael Allman and Fred Sack at the property. We did a walkthrough and discussed the progress and where we're at. I have some pictures here to show. I know they posted something to the agenda as recently as this afternoon. I'll just quickly go through these. Here's the front of the house, the east elevation, showing the front porch that we wanted constructed has been done. You can see the steps there. Well, they are the temporary steps. They're not code compliant at this point, I assume. Those will be done in the near future. Below that is just another view of the front porch. Looks really nice. It obviously presents well from the street. Having the front porch on there just makes it look even more finished from the exterior. Up here, there was some open roof rafters and some rotted soffit that's been enclosed, painted all the way around to the west. And these pictures were taken as recently as, you know, just like two o'clock this afternoon to show you the most recent, up-to-date. This is the porch continuing to wrap around. As was on the front, there was rotted areas up here that's been replaced, painted. This continues just past the porch on the southwest corner of the house. That's not been painted yet, but you can see new soffit there will be painted. So that's been repaired. And all these were items that were on the initial resolution. This is an area that has not been resolved yet, and Mr. Allman acknowledges that in his letter that was addressed to Mayor Shum. This is the, basically, it's going to be a walk-down basement. That's the west basement foundation wall. The grating is not appropriate. Obviously, when we do get rain again, if we do, there'll need to be a drainage system identified or retaining wall or both. I think there are some plans. Those, I have not seen those. This is the northwest corner of back of the house. An area here, this area all along here at the top of the roof line was rotted out. It's been replaced. It's been painted. I went ahead and threw this on there. It wasn't part of the resolution initially, but I just wanted to show you that they also have addressed this. This was a, for a chimney that was on the house, and it was just basically boarded up around here. It wasn't a significant concern of mine at the time for the last couple of years, but they went ahead and took that out, added the siding that matches it and have temporarily painted it to just presents better. Garage, there was a little bit of confusion of whether it needed to be demolished or repaired. I was originally told by HRP initially during the purchasing of the property that they were going to tear it down. I think we've agreed to acknowledge that at this point in time, they're going to keep that for storage and eventually, hopefully, somebody is going to repair it. But as you can see up here, still a lot of work that needs to be done on the roof. Up here, you know, the, there's, the roof overhang isn't complete, and you just have shingles laying on the side. So there's still some work that needs to be done on the garage. I think that's acknowledged by HRP. Here's the south elevation of the garage, just to show you that, obviously, I don't think the press board siding is going to be permanent. Probably needs to be sited, painted, and everything else. So for the most part, my opinion is where we were at in May, there's been work done to satisfy Resolution six nine seventy-one that we brought to you in May. There are still things that need to be done in the house. I think, based on our discussions Friday, their intent is to get a buyer. They would like to see the resolutions not hanging over any potential buyer. That may impact financing. It may just impact a buyer coming forward in general. Quite frankly, I've dealt with this for a very long time, so if we can get to that point, great. However, it's important to note that we're still a long ways away from a habitable house. Do I necessarily think it's going to fit the criteria for the unsafe and dangerous structure? Not necessarily. Couple important things I didn't mention on the interior is we confirmed and approved the foundation, the structure to the foundation connections, which was something that we had been trying to do for a very long time. We confirmed that the west wall was okay structurally and all that. So those are important things that were done as well, other than the exterior things. So what needs to happen now is we need to find out what we want to do with the house in regards to, I think it's pretty safe to say, unless something's happened since last Friday, that they're still going to market it to be sold. But we're probably looking at interior finishes that are probably going to run over fifty thousand dollars probably to get HVAC, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, your flooring, your kitchen cabinets, your sinks, your toilets, your light fixtures, all those things that hopefully can be done in the near future with a buyer on board. So that's all I have for you. I'm going to ask any questions. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Shum and Commissioners. I want to thank Mr. Jimenez for working with us all these months. He's been shepherding this whole thing along and keeping us moving and keeping us focused, although we had in our business plan from the start to bring this house to a point where it will be code compliant and ready to market to somebody who then could do the general contracting and construction, because we have never pretended to be general contractors or builders. So that's been our intent from all along. Or find somebody who would just want to buy it for their own and then do it as their own fixer-upper on a do-it-yourself basis. So I understand that, let's see, zoom. That this is on the website with the agenda. I sent this in Monday. So, okay, you have seen it. Okay, good. And these are just the similar pictures as Mr. Jimenez pointed out. When we started, we wanted to focus on the major structural code compliant items, the big-ticket items, ones that would bring this resolution more to a point of completion, as well as put it in a position where a builder, a developer, would see it as an opportunity rather than as a liability. So we focused on, for instance, the foundation anchors. It's been a thorn in everybody's side from day one, and we got those in. They're approved, approved by building inspection. The foundation walls approved. The new porch, major structural improvements, all code compliant and approved, except there is no rail around it. That's one item that's, and the steps, but the porch itself is. So we went through all these major items, all the roof repairs, as Mr. Jimenez pointed out. And as we mentioned in our request to you to rescind the two demolition orders, these are completed so that we feel it's something that now is something that we can market. It's something we can say that this is something you can take and run with, a builder, for instance, or somebody who might be a homeowner. And on the inverse side, as we explained in this request, those resolutions of demolition, if anybody, whether a builder or an individual, would consider purchasing it, and we've had inquiries from one builder and about seven individuals, so far, no takers. Because, I mean, myself, you know, I got into this not because I'm looking to make a profit on it. I got in this because I'm trying to do it for the sake of the neighborhood as a civic gesture. But somebody who's doing this to make money, if they see these orders of demolition, that's a big risk. It's a big risk for them to take it to a bank, and the bank could see that as a big risk. So at this point, we feel we've brought the structure to a point where it can stand on its own, literally and figuratively, but, you know, it doesn't need these orders of demolition to keep us moving on it. It's already to that point. To take it to the next point, they're actually an impediment. And we explained that in the request here. For one thing, if we have to keep working and adding to this, we're going to be adding more cost to it and making it more expensive for somebody to buy, for us to try to sell it. So that's why we're requesting that you rescind those orders of demolition. We think they've served their purpose. We felt we didn't really need them to be poking at us to keeping us going. We've been wanting to do this all along from day one. Thank you. But as Mr. Jimenez pointed out, you know, things slowed down at one point when we thought we had a buyer, and it dragged on, and we didn't, and then we had to regroup. So that was our intent all along. We think we're at that point now, and we'd like to then be able to have you give us the opportunity to take it to the next step. So.
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this agenda item?
Jenna Coker, part of--
Because what you use that, yeah, it would be easier for you, I think. And we need to have you sign into, please.
Okay. Jenna Coker, part of Haskellboro Partners. And we do have someone that's very interested in purchasing the house. They asked that I not give their name out, but I really feel that the house will sell very, very shortly. And that's all, you know.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Commissioner?
I was, I drove out there. Told Mr. Allman I would do that, and I drove by and got out and walked around. And that was late last week sometime, and it's noticeably improved. And it appeared to me that it was a fairly tight structure that probably weren't going to have vagrants, be able to enter it. It looked like it was pretty well secure. It looked pretty good. It is, as you, exactly as you portray it, a fixer-upper where someone would have to come in and put a lot of either capital or sweat equity into it, but it's, it looks like it's been reasonably well put into a shape that it could move forward from here. So I would be inclined to suggest we rescind the demolition resolution. We would hope it would move from this point to some occupancy here soon. I mean, I'm sure you do too, so that would be my wish for all of us to end happily ever after, which was what we always liked down here at City Hall, little fairy tale endings. So. Anyone else?
Real quick, Mayor, I want to thank, I want to thank the partners and the work that they've done in, you know, getting the property to a point where it's marketable. I want to thank our staff on continuing to work with the partners here and everybody that was involved. You know, I know that this has been quite a project. It seems like, you know, everybody's wanted, as the mayor just said, a positive outcome on this, and I think that this is an opportunity where it's worked very well between staff and, you know, a partnership group here and for the neighborhood that won't lose a house that, you know, hasn't been there long, but, you know, hopefully it's going to be there for a very long time from this point forward. So anyway, thanks to everybody involved.
Resolution number sixty-nine seventy-one, was that the number? And that was to demolish?
That was the most recent one that they brought to you, May fifteenth.
Is there another resolution in play, too?
Sixty-eight eighty-five.
That original one was six eight eight five. That was the one that we initiated in May tenth, I think, May something two thousand ten.
So we need to--
I think the easiest way to rescind both of those. I think six nine seventy-one was a continuation of six eight eight five.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any, do you have any comments that all took to the ongoing rehabilitation of this property? Are we there where it can be sold and move forward?
You know, I mean, it's all based on market and price, and I haven't been involved in what they're trying to sell it for. That's really not my business. I just hope it happens. I think they have the intentions to make it happen, and it looks better than it's ever looked. I mean, these are always unique, and not very often do we get a house moved from somewhere else and it's put on a brand-new foundation that sits there. October this year will be seven years. So it's been a very long, drawn-out process. So I'm confident that they can get it done, and hopefully it happens. At worst-case scenario, if it doesn't happen, then I'll be back.
We hope you're back, but we hope you're--
I'll be back for something.
For different reasons.
Yeah, right.
Mayor, may I, on that, on that item, I would just like to interject that it would be helpful for us to get direction from the commission, because there are actually outstanding code issues with the property that we would expect they be conveyed to a potential buyer to know that there are some code issues here. I would think it would be helpful to us to get direction from you to monitor, keep this property on our list to monitor, and maybe inspect another six months to see where we're at with it and bring you an update.
All right. To, yeah, I mean, looking through the windows, you can see there's substantial work that needs to be done in the interior before you can have someone live there. But is that something that we have to enforce at this point? Or is that just for an occupancy permit?
Well, Brian can maybe speak if there's any outstanding exterior conditions. I think the overall intent was to button it up and get it safe and in a somewhat presentable manner, but as I understand it, and Brian can elaborate, all fifteen items haven't been completely completed yet, but if we're trying to facilitate the overall plan to get a new owner who will complete the project, it has been our practice in the past to keep something on the books so that a new owner doesn't walk in and think that they don't have to comply with the code. They clearly will have to at some point. Brian can speak to maybe some of these questions.
I think we have some discretion at this point. I mean, as we always do. I think my point earlier was that we're real close. I think their point, HRP's point, is, you know, there's some, maybe some minor roof repairs that need to be done, but if they can hold off on spending additional funds and keep the cost down on their selling price, the hope is that someone is more likely to come forward than if they continue to do stuff. I think we're at the point now where I'm confident to say we can let it go as far as rescinding a demolition order. I mean, it's sort of a double-edged sword. The longer we let these go, the more opportunity we want to give them to not tear it down, which is great for the community, the neighborhood, the property owners. But then usually more things are being done to the house, so then it's harder for us to make that decision to say, hmm, what happens if nothing else proceeds? Are we going to still want to tear it down when there's that many more improvements made? So it's a continuing balancing act. You know, there are some things that need to be done to the roof. I think Mr. Allman stated in his letter that to keep costs down, those things would like to be passed on to the new property owner. The retaining wall or the drainage system to the rear that I showed you the picture of, I think that's something that they want to let the new property owner deal with. So the garage, you know, I showed you those pictures. There's things that need to be done there as well. A new property owner may not want to keep the garage. They may just want to demo it and take it down. There's some issues there with the garage doors, the way they hang. And so there's some stuff that needs to be done there. But on the big scale, I think, you know, we're in a much better place than we were.
How do, how do we communicate with a new owner or prospective buyer that there's code conditions on it or are going to be code conditions? Or they're not code compliant, I guess is what I want to say.
Right. I mean, our case remains open, so I believe it's upon the seller to disclose that to a potential buyer, is my understanding, because our case will remain open. And we've got various levels of enforcement, and the discretion Brian speaks of is, you know, we have a lot of properties that we're monitoring for advancement of a condition. We have properties that we're actively in court with. We have properties that we bring to the commission for abatement proceedings. And so we agree that this has been repaired to the point where the highest level of enforcement, the abate and demolish, has lessened to the point where we can agree that it doesn't necessarily need to carry the weight of a resolution to demolish, but we also want to be accurate in our finding that there are some code violations there. And so I think just through these proceedings and the information being passed on to the current owner, that we will maintain an active violation case should be enough.
Yeah.
How about, how about if we rescind these two resolutions and then ask for a review a year from now to see how things are looking?
I think that would be--
That gives, that doesn't put the property under any kind of demolition contract, but it keeps us, keeps it on the watch list to where, a year from now, that gives you plenty of time to sell the property, to go out and take a look at it and make sure that there's nothing that's, needs to be taken care of again. So that would probably be a good way to--
Yeah, the way I envision this is it's still going to be on my list. That's not going away. We'll still keep in contact with HRP. We'll still monitor it. I hope that they will keep me informed of any significant progress, whether it's them doing something or the property's being sold. I envision it being on city manager's report when it does sell, and then maybe giving periodic updates of the progress as it goes forward.
Just a suggestion that if everything's going well with the project, that, you know, I don't know that we need to waste this body's time with that, and maybe if we could direct it, if there's significant problems, that it come back. And, I mean, I'm sure it'd be nice to hear that it's sold and everything's great on a city manager's report. I just don't want it--
No, I'm not--
If we don't have to have it as a--
No, I'm not saying a regular agenda item. I'm just saying something that our city manager can report to you all on--
Perfect.
Hopefully have a good outcome.
Any questions? Entertaining motion at this time?
So moved to--
Rescind sixty-nine seventy-one and sixty-eight eighty-five?
Second. Yeah.
And to review it in a year.
Second.
So moved.
Cromwell, Amix, all members say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carries five zero. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck on the sale.
I'm sorry?
Said, "Good luck on the sale." And next item on the agenda is to receive an update on eleven oh-six Rhode Island Street regarding the exterior yard and the structure code violations.
This item was originally last heard on July twenty-fourth. We originally, before that, had it on May fifteenth, and we had a couple of resolutions to address the structures themselves and the exterior yard conditions. We came back on July twenty-fourth, and we, I informed you that the exterior yard conditions had been brought up to compliance with code. The Barland family was represented by Brian. He showed up and gave testimony and asked that you extend this hearing, or not this hearing, this follow-up for three weeks, and that's why we're here. At that time, he informed you that he was in discussions with Mike Myers, with Hernley and Associates, and that hopefully they would come back tonight with a much more detailed plan on the feasibility of them taking on the project of rehabbing the structures in question or possibly selling the property. So that's where we're-- So, that's where we're at tonight, and they're in attendance, and they will provide you information regarding where they're at.
Thank you very much. Property owner would like to come forward with their representative?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mike Myers, Hernley Associates. There we go. I sent you all an email today. I did bring hard copy. I don't know if you need it or not. If you do, I'd be happy to deliver that to you now. Okay?
We got an email. We have it.
Oh, we got the email.
Did receive it via email.
That's right.
It's recyclable.
I, I do not have plans and cost estimates for you tonight on, on the exact plan for this property, but I, I can tell you that I have been retained by the Barland family to put together a detailed plan and cost estimates for them based on some options for the lot. I've begun the process of meeting with all the stakeholders and various parties in order to fully understand the ramifications of, financial ramifications to the Barland family and historic implications of, of development on the lot. Keep my comments short tonight, but I, I have met with the city, with some city planners and Lynn, Lynn Zollner, the historic administrator, and I have a meeting set up later this week with Matthew Holt Camp, the, the State Preservation Office. What I would like to, what I would like to see happen with this property is a fairly slow, deliberate process of, of understanding what, what it means to preserve it and to develop it in a way that, that makes sense, because I think it's a, it's a valuable historic resource, both for the Barland family and for our city. And so, what I'm asking for tonight is, is just kind of enable me to do my work, to present the Barland family with, with an appropriate plan and cost estimates for the, the future of the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have regarding my involvement in the project and timeframe and so forth.
I have a question for you here. On page two of your handout, I read this earlier this afternoon, says it is our hope that in about two months' time, we can have a well-thought-out feasibility study in the Barlands' hands, and we believe that they should be given an additional period of months to consult with bankers, attorneys, and others as needed to process the information and come to a decision on preservation and development of selling the property. Additionally, towards the end of this letter, it kind of, page three, maybe? We understand that city commission codes enforcement, neighborhood groups, and others interested parties want to ensure continued improvement on the lot. In a timely manner, we suggest that we provide you with updates every couple of months or as you see fit on our progress. The only concern I have, Mike, is that that's pretty open-ended. I know the historic planning certification does take some time, but, I mean, I'd like to see a little bit more well-defined timetable than additional periods of months.
Yeah.
I don't know what that means, if it's twelve or fifteen or four.
Yeah, the, I can probably define the amount of time it would take me to do some structural analysis of the, of the, of the properties, of the buildings, and provide some cost estimates, but, you know, the hard part to define, I suppose, would be the amount of time it would take to find lenders, and for, for the Barland family, I, you know, I, maybe it's more discussion that we need, but I understand my part of it, but what I don't understand, you know, beyond when I, when I hand them my estimate of how this is going to work, exactly what happens after that. I mean, I'm, I do preservation and, and design, but I don't do banking and, and legal, you know, forming LLCs or whatever it takes to, to get the, the, the legal part of the thing done.
Are you going to do, you're going to do the consulting work in terms of the structure and the historic part of it, the historic renovation, and are you also going to be part of the application process for the tax, tax credits?
I would be, but that's not, you know, the first phase is what I'm doing for them, which is, which is trying to gain an understanding of, of, of what should happen there in an appropriate historic preservation scenario, and then to assign some values to the, the possible construction that would be involved with that, and also look at rents and things like that for them, so...
So, you're part of it. How long will that take?
You know, I, if I could get two months to do it, that, that would be ideal. It could probably be done in less time, but, you know, we, we're not a big firm, and we have a pretty, you know, regular, heavy workload, so it's, it's a matter of, you know, putting priorities together.
Questions for Mr. Myers?
One comment, Mayor. Mike forgot to bring up that he and Brian last week were at East Lawrence Neighborhood Associations, comments and things from the Neighborhood Association. I don't know what they would like to see as far as developing on that lot, what's going to happen with the properties. There is dialogue that's going on between the Neighborhood Association and the owners of the properties, so that would be a positive.
We've gotten fairly good feedback so far, just in the general idea that, that, you know, that, that this is a valuable property to the city as, you know, historic resource, and that we ought to sort of take our time and make sure that we do it right, and, and we're really just at the first steps of that, and, you know, as, as Mr. Jimenez mentioned, they, the family has been slowly undertaking those things that are the most obvious visually from the outside, the, the porch and the, the storage yard and so forth, so, and they might want to speak towards, you know, what they will continue to do during this process. I know that they, they're out there on a regular basis. There's been some trees removed today or the last couple of days, and it's, it's really starting to look cleaned up.
Other questions?
Yeah, Mike, I read the summary, the last summary on page four and extending onto page five, starting on page three, where you kind of outlined what might be necessary to move forward with rehabilitation and making this property cash flow, I guess, to, to make no other term clear. But what I'm concerned might happen is that you spend a lot of time identifying what needs to be done to the structure that exists, and then also talk about putting up additional structures, which may or not be approved, but may be the focal point or the only way that this property could cash flow or generate enough revenue to justify the renovations to the structure. So, we could go through all this process, and if you're identifying plans for the whole of this, of the property as opposed to this structure that we're here talking about and those ancillary structures that we get down the road, and what we come up with is a solution that's going to require the construction of additional building, which won't be approved by HRC. So, then we go down this process, nothing gets done to the structure, which really what we're talking about, and we end up with a, with a prospectus that doesn't cash flow because you, you need to build another building that, that just won't fly.
We, we have a real good track record with the HRC, and, and part of the process really has been to talk to all the parties, and starting with, with Lynn Zollner, and to try to get an understanding of what they would expect would be, would be appropriate, and that's hopefully what I've conveyed somewhat in the, in the notes from that meeting, and, and we already have a pretty good idea of, of what we're, what we're, what we're talking about in terms of increasing residential or even possibly office density on the lot without damaging the, you know, historic relationships that exist on the site. So, as far as whether it would cash flow with or without construction, it's certainly going to be better with new construction as a component, but I can't say that it's, that it's, it wouldn't, you know, that you couldn't just rehab the house. The, the great thing about this property is that it's already, you know, listed and federally listed so that the Barlands could get as much as forty-five percent of their construction costs back from tax credit. So, nobody is in a better position than they are to, to, to make financial gain from the preservation and restoration and adaptive use of these structures, so...
Well, then, I guess what I'd like to see is, if we're going to keep moving forward or extend timelines, is some sort of parallel evaluation, one, with just rehabbing and improving the structure and the costs associated with that, and then an ancillary plan that would include higher density, additional use of the land that's there, and the other requisite parking and other improvements that need to be made to the property separate, because, you know, that may not go, but we still need to move, we need to, still need to be, see progress and a plan on what would cost to rehab this building as-is and the ancillary structures that exist.
Sure.
And because if we, if we marry them right now, then we're going to end up with a plan that's going to be basically, or it's going to hinge on additional density, which may or may not be allowed.
Yeah. That would be, that would be easy enough to, to provide, being as, you know, the newer structure has, there's no tax credits associated with it, it's all new construction. That would be a pretty easy formula, a function in, in the formula of cash flow.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Myers? Ms. Barland, you want to say anything?
If you have some questions, we'll be there.
Okay, let's see if any members of the public would like to say anything about this.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Katie Walsh, and I'm on the board of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association. And as Commissioner Amick said, Brian and Mike came to our last meeting just to update us, and the most joyful news we heard was there was no intention to tear it down, so people were very happy about that. Also, I'm glad you brought up the idea that there need to be parallel tracks to look at whether something can be built on that corner. We have not taken an official vote, but I think the feeling amongst everybody I talked to, and believe me, people have been talking about this a lot in the neighborhood, is that whatever it takes to save those structures, because the De La Huntie and the Barland family have such important stories for our town, so I can't say officially, but I can't imagine you'd run into a lot of opposition from laypeople to add a structure. And traditionally, from the HRC standpoint, I'm looking at Mike here because he's been at so many meetings, often they request that there be a building on a corner. It's traditional, it's part of the downtown and the neighborhood. Traditional form is to have, you know, a, a home on the corners or a small shop on the corners, and so I'd be surprised, having gone to years of these meetings, if they would oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Guess I have a question for Mr. Barland. Chairman, one is Brian.
Sure.
What, what we're trying to do is to see this happen, of course, to see this renovation happen, and I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned, not totally concerned, but a little concerned that this could, there could be quite a timeline between today and when there's actually anything that gets done. Can you address any of my concerns?
Well, I, I think I...
I guess I asked you last time...
I think I can.
I, I guess, just in all fairness, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but is there, and this is the same question I asked last time, is there, is the will, is the will there for you, for you to accomplish this?
Yeah, that's, that's part of, part of the information gathering we're going through with, you know, with Hernley and Associates. You know, once, once we get the information from him, it might be a very quick decision is, you know, which way we go, you know, and that kind of addresses, you know, Mr. Dever's, you know, question of, okay, well, what happens if it, if it doesn't go this way and this is all you're, all you're left with? You know, we don't have that information, we won't have that information till, you know, Mike pulls that all together, and it, you know, it may be a very short, you know, time period after he gives us some information, as to which way that's going to, which way that's going to go, and that's part of what we're pulling together is, can it do something on its own? Does it need new additional? What additional can we get? And that's why we're going through that whole process. To kind of address, you know, the question that you put to Mike, I mean, we're looking at, obviously, pointing upon their expertise, you know, of the, of the tax credits and all that into the, into the whole picture, so...
That's a very fair answer, very good answer. What, what I'd like to see us do, and I'll just throw this out, and the commission can kind of comment on it, but probably then, since Mr. Myers says in a couple of months he can have the information generated that he thinks is necessary for you to look at to see which way you go, then perhaps bring this agenda back in two months, and you can tell us what, what the update and what you believe which direction you're going to go with it.
Yeah.
So, that would be updating us, and then we'd know what is going to happen with it as well, so...
Okay. The only thing I would say to that is, I mean, if he has two months to give us that information, I'm thinking that we'll have some kind of a gut feeling as to where we're going to update you. I mean, you know, I don't want to, you know, get the information in two months and say, well, we haven't had a chance to look at it, so we can't tell you anything, so, but...
That's a fair statement. So, maybe three months is what we ought to ask for them to come back, and then you'd have two months for the work to be generated. You have a month to look at all the alternatives, and then you would have an idea which direction you want to go. That sound reasonable to everybody here?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, our, out of bounds here, so our action tonight then would be, move back one more, just ask staff to put this back on the agenda approximately three months and receive an update from the Barland family as to the progress on eleven-oh-six Rhode Island. Everybody in agreement with that statement?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Cromwell, Dever, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five-zero. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda will be to consider authorizing staff to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for the former Borders Building at seven-hundred New Hampshire Street for the temporary location of the Lawrence Public Library operations during the upcoming construction at the current library site. Mr. Chief Librarian?
Brad Allen, Library Director, will introduce this item, and I can comment on it generally. Commissioner Cromwell has served on the committee guiding this project, and Jonathan and I have recently worked on the, the lease issues, but Brad, maybe introduce the item, and then we'll fill in from there.
Sure. Hi, I'm Library Director Brad Allen. We've been trying to decide as we're getting prepared for the renovation and expansion of the library, the best way to serve the community as we move forward into this transition. So, we feel that it's best to move off-site for the service that we're able to provide to the public, and it will be a shorter construction span, so we've been looking at the costs, and which I think has been provided in the memos and the, and all of the information that you have. I can answer any of those questions, the, just to keep it really brief, we feel that this works within the budget. We feel that in a lot of ways, it minimizes the risks of the project possibly going on an extended amount of time. You have a lot more potential for subcontractor premiums, not knowing what building around human beings can be like. So, we feel really comfortable that this is a plan that'll, that'll work for us and that we're excited to move forward with it, and we'll be able to provide good service to the community in this transition, so, and I'm just here really to answer questions if you have any.
If everything lines up just the way you hope it does, when would you make the move?
The move, that's a great question. We're, we've been waiting to find out whether we are going to move, but we've been, the tentative plans that we've been talking about with B.A. Green and with Gould Evans is that we would be staging it in November, December, and hoping to open in, like, at the beginning of the year in the Borders Building to give us a little bit of time for, there's not going to be much that's going to need to be done in that building. I don't think we're going to go look at it next week again, hopefully, and, and see how we're going to move into it, but... into it, but we're hoping that we're gonna be able to get everything prepared to go and then just move it all pretty quickly so that we're, we're gonna minimize the amount of time that we'll be shut down. And December, kind of late December and in the holidays is a, is a pretty decent time to not be open, is that's lower, we're not as busy during those times or don't have as much checkout, so we're hoping that would minimize the, I don't know, the, the time that we'd be closed would have less effect in that, in that, those weeks near the end of December, and then we start to get busier again after the holidays, and so we're hoping that we'll be up and running.
Would you have outside storage somewhere else?
We would, yeah.
Maybe outside, but storage apart from the facility itself.
Yeah, we, we will, and we're investigating that, we don't have a place set yet. Tents, no, but we're, we're looking at a few locations, and we will, and we've submitted it in the site plan, that we would need a little bit of an additional temporary space outside of the building. We've submitted that to planning, some modular offices for, for staff, there's not a lot of back-of-house in that Borders Building, so we need a little additional square footage out in the parking lot too, but we're, we're working on that as well, so.
Any other question I've been asked quite frequently is, will the computers move to the Borders Site?
Yes, yes, they will. We intend to have as many computers there as we currently do.
Other questions? Mike?
Brad, I assume that we've evaluated the structure and the Borders, since it's a bookstore, I guess that the concrete floor and stuff is substantial, they have to be able to carry the weight of our library movement dedication.
That's a great question. I would, I would imagine, I, I don't think we'll have any more, any more materials in there than, than they had had. Haven't done anything scientific in that respect, but I hadn't really had any concerns just based on my recollections of, of how much was in there and what we'll have in there.
Okay. City Manager, wanna add anything?
Only thing I would add is that we will also be leasing the, the parking area. It'd be my recommendation that we work with Brad to come up with a parking plan, I don't know if it would be establishing parking limits, for example, two-hour parking in that, that parking, so there's some turnover for patrons for, for the library. We'll probably work with Brad on maybe encouraging his staff to park off-site, because there's, there is limited parking there, and some of the parking lot is gonna be used for the modular units that he's gonna have for his administrative staff. So, we'll be proceeding with that in, in order to, to make this all happen, and we'll probably have our parking control officers police that. You'll probably see some, we may need to do an ordinance or something like that in order to establish that on that, on that, on that site during this temporary period. I think you understand the, the financial structure of this, where it's a triple-net lease, so we'll be responsible for insurance, we'll cover that through our general casualty policy, we'll be responsible for utilities, we think that Brad's budget can handle that because we'll have less utility use at the existing library, there'll also be some for, for the construction, and there'll be property taxes, which we've already met with a county appraiser, and we think we understand where that value is, is headed, and have made calculations accordingly, but we'll have that responsibility as well, and that's all included in your budget. But wanted you to see all of that. We do think it's the, it's the right thing to do, and it'll be an exciting project for the community.
Questions?
Yeah, question. Yeah, this definitely sounds like the right way to go, I'm glad to hear that's a recommendation. What I did miss was the actual downtime you're thinking, does it, two to three weeks?
I'm hoping it will be no more than that. I mean, honestly, I, I wish I had a better answer, I mean, my intention is to minimize it as much as we can. We've had some initial meetings with some professional moving companies, and I think if we stage it the right way, you know, we can just get everything ready to go, and then, you know, those, based on the amount of stuff that we've had, we've had a company say that they could probably physically move the things in, you know, a five to six day period, so hopefully, you know, we'd have to get all of our, all of our networking and all that stuff back live, but I, you know, I mean, I'm hoping that we're gonna keep it to two weeks or so, but we just, at this point, we just haven't studied it in enough depth to give you a much better answer than that, but-
Thanks.
We wanna be closed as short amount of time as possible.
And then Dave, I spoke with someone with Hobbs and Taylor Lofts this morning, I was just curious about from parking situation, if maybe we can involve them in that discussion too?
Good idea is to talk to them. They, we do have, you know, with, with the lease, we do have that, that parking, and then we also have an arrangement on the Hobbs Taylor property where some of that is policed by the city, because if it's two-hour limitation or meter limitation, so there will be more, more parking there. And the, the people that are using the existing parking area will be probably encouraged to, to park elsewhere in the community.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for, oh, Mr. Dever?
Are you planning on moving all of the circulated materials, or what are you, what are you planning on doing as far as moving- Right. -items? Well, we are planning on empty, the building will be emptied, so we're either going to be moving things into Borders or a temporary location. Right now, we're estimating about half of the collections would be in the building, and then most of the locations we're looking at are really close to the library, so we're working on a plan where we can retrieve things from, just have everything in shelf order in our temporary relocation, and have a paging system where we're getting everything, I'm hoping within a few hours, but definitely daily for people from that, that spot. And we're really curious to see how much of that less popular stuff really is going to be going in this interim as we're thinking about what collection sizes need to be as we move into the future, so we see this as a, as a decent experiment really into seeing what size collection the community needs and how people use our collections, so, but we're looking at about half. And then, you know, the, I, I was trying to compare the two budgets of the cost estimates, and basically there's this temporary provisions clause that has two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand dollars in it in one instance and, and not in the other, so, did you read and evaluate those temporary provisions, and did we identify all of the costs that, you know, were really actually not going to occur? Did we have our construction manager do that? How did we- Yeah, BA, did you see that, the appendix A itemizes that two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand dollars, that was provided by BA Green? Did you look at it? I did, yeah. And how do you feel about those numbers and as, because we did increase the budget slightly, and I was just curious if there's any- Those, those seem reasonable to me, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not a construction manager, so I don't know how to calculate those things, but as they're looking at the project more, they, you know, those, those costs are four months, the additional four months of their costs for just general construction, which is about twenty thousand a month, they've got to do some, you know, you have to do a lot of temporary partitions and setups to keep everybody safe when you're moving around, so that's some of that cost. And then, really, the, the part that we just don't know, that it seems to me that's somewhat of, just a, I don't like to use the word guess, that sounds too vague, but is they're trying to figure out what, and we've talked to Gould Evans about also, is just with the, the premiums that a subcontractor might put on, thinking what it might cost them more having people in the building is almost incalculable, you can try to guess, but it, it could be about where they've got it, or it could be even considerably higher. That's why, you know, we, we feel like these are pretty conservative numbers, and really, when you look at that contingency being a little bit, a little bit smaller in, in our moving out version, we could end up saving a lot more money because the temporary provisions could get a lot higher as the timeline moves further out, or subcontractor bids come in a lot higher because they're worried about a situation they're not as familiar with, or it might limit the amount of bids you get based on construction subcontractors that would want to bid out the job, knowing that there are people in the building, so, I, I, you know, my understanding with BA Green is they're pretty conservative, and they don't really, you know, they give you a number that they think is good, and that they don't really exaggerate things. I mean, I've been here just a short time, but, so I feel confident in their numbers, they, they provided me what, the best they thought they could, so. So, there's a good chance that overall costs may be less because of this, giving them the entire building and allowing them to work in a more consistent and flowing fashion and not have to worry about moving people and items- That, that's my feeling, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a bit of a layman when it comes to this, but I kind of, in my mind, see it as a insurance policy in a certain way, that, you know, we're paying a little bit more upfront, but it, like insurance policies, sometimes you don't wreck your car, and you, you know, you have to be insured because it's the law, I guess, but you know, as you're hedging your bets, I think it's a good hedge against some potential timelines getting extended out, you know, and also just costs that you can't predict. I think we can predict the costs a lot more in the scenario being outside of the building, that BA Green can have a better understanding of where their bids are gonna come in. That, that makes sense, so that, that was another thing, I mean, we had been thinking about it all along, is just really a way that we can provide good service to the public, but the more that we investigate this, I think it's also pretty smart financially, just in minimizing and mitigating any kind of risk we might have in being in a building. And even just the, the possibility of liability of somebody getting sick, you know, I mean, people in other libraries I've talked to, just with the concrete dust, sometimes you can have a worker's comp issue out of that, and people can get ill from all of these things, I mean, this is just hearsay or people talking, but those are things to think about too, you know, they may or may not happen.
Yeah.
Questions?
I just, just a comment here, being pretty well-versed in this, and this is something that we've looked at for a long time, whether or not this would be prudent or not, and that's one of the reasons we brought in BA Green, and, and, you know, my confidence is that this is the right way to do it. I think that really it's the, you know, in order to get a good product done quickly, fast, you know, for, for less money and less inconvenience to the public, this is the only way to really do it. We can either move it one time over to the Borders location, or we can move it four or five times, everything within the building as we work on different sections of the building, and then try to deal with the, the fact that we've got a very, very public building design, you know, at least half of the purposes for, for small children, and we've got a major construction project going on in the middle of it, and really, it's, it's gonna be very difficult to get those costs, and, and I, you know, Green's first task was to really dive into this and analyze whether this was the right decision or not, and we looked at it in the city, and Brad's done a great job jumping in, you know, headfirst into this right away with no downtime at all, and appreciate all that, so, no, I, there's, I've got a great deal of confidence that this is the right way to go for the library project.
Well, we thank you for considering it, we've worked really hard to try to make this work as reasonably as we could, and, and working with the realtors and, and just trying to make the best deal that, that we can and minimize costs, and, and I do think it'll be, I think it'll be good for the public. So, thank you.
Thank you. See if there's any pub, public comment on this item?
It, it came, came and went, now it's back. They're frozen.
Hubbard Collinsworth, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners, and City Manager. Couple of quick questions come to mind. The homeless, granted, we've got, we broke ground today on LCS's rehab out there on the new facility, but we still, we've got a looming question mark, how many people are gonna be downtown that will take advantage of being in the library like they normally are? And then the other question is, being as we're talking about Borders Bookstore, the rent paid and everything that Dave was discussing, would it be cheaper for the city to buy that building and own it outright and use it as other public facilities? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Any other comments? Do we wanna answer the questions this gentleman has raised?
I think the, the major question was whether or not it made sense to purchase the building. It's on the market for, I think, two million dollars, maybe a little bit less than that. Don't necessarily have a purpose, say purpose for that, other than our temporary use here. I think we'd like to see it kind of repurposed as part of the retail or office fabric of, of downtown eventually. I mean, we have some office needs, and it'd be good maybe to consolidate and, and own some property, but we, we did just talk very generally about it, but it didn't seem to really make a lot of sense to, to pursue. Brad, I don't know if you wanna, I think there was some question about the homeless individuals, I mean, that's, you know, it's, it's open to the general public, so, any persons that, you know, wanna use the facility are more than welcome to, and, you know, our, our public library, I think, is open more than any public building in the, in the community, and I, I think that's probably gonna be the expectation, or we may be a little bit shy of that at, at the temporary quarters, but I think we'll, we'll work on that. Trying, was there anything else?
Just basically the accessibility to a safe site for the homeless individuals.
Well, it's, it's, it's a public library, it's not, it's not a shelter, but as you know, but I mean, I think it was gonna be a good public safe use for everybody, including those that may not have a permanent home right now.
Any other comments? Any luck?
I got two, I got two questions. Dave?
Yes.
Can you explain to me the lease agreement, looks like it's two-hundred-and-thirty-ish, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars approximately paid up front?
Right.
Is there some favorable terms we received by doing that?
We get seven dollars a square foot, which we thought was, was pretty good-
Very good.
-in this market and at that use, I mean, I think, we, we thought getting anything below double digits was, was pretty good, and so that, that was part of the, the agreement, I mean, the time value of money at this point, we're not gonna be getting a lot more, much in interest proceeds from, from that, so that, that was part of the, the negotiation on that.
So, they didn't start at a number and we dropped down, that was just something that-
Right.
-they threw at us.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, it was, I think it was listed at, at two million dollars for, for acquisition, and, so, if you would've capitalized that, probably would've been a lot more from, from a rent standpoint, so we felt pretty good about, about that number.
And then I, did I miss in the materials where the storage location is, where-
Well, we haven't-
-other materials?
We haven't-
And how much that's gonna cost?
Determined that yet, I mean, we've looked at some, a, a large vacant spot near Eleventh and New Hampshire that has been, that Allen Press Building, and we haven't consummated anything with them, but we think that that's gonna be a very modest rent rate as well. We're also looking in, in city spaces as well, just to see if that might, that might work, but it's probably gonna be, well, we want us something that's reasonably accessible for, for Brad's staff to be able to access on a, on a daily basis, but we don't think it's gonna cost that much.
And do we, is that, is there an estimate in the total? It, it's, the storage is listed on those line, I, we've got it penciled in at forty thousand right now, and, so we are hoping to get something, I think we'll, I think we'll be pretty close to that, some of the, where we're at in some of the negotiations with buildings we're looking at are gonna come in pretty close to that. I think we're, we're gonna work on minimizing the amount of time we need to be in those storages areas, I think it'll be a little bit shorter than the twenty months. And the, also to kind of add on to the, the le, the, the lease, they had originally offered a twenty-four month lease, and, and that was making the cost really from the property tax standpoint, and just the overall cost of it being two-hundred-and-eighty thousand instead of two-hundred-and-thirty-three, and the property taxes were gonna be, you know, twenty-five percent higher because it's four more months. We were able to negotiate that down, and really part of that negotiation was, if you pay us right now, we, we'll do it. And then they, they also are giving us a month, that optional month-to-month in case things go sideways, so we weren't really, they had been playing hardball on that, and they just suddenly agreed to that at the very end too, so we have some buffer on it too, but we just wanted to minimize it as much as we could, especially as those property taxes are significant addition to the cost, so. Okay, so that forty grand was in both estimates, I saw it there. Yeah, it, it's there, and, and, and I'm, as we're moving closer, you know, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're gonna get close. It might go a slightly higher than that, but it should be close. Okay.
I do, I do have a question for Brad, as much as I can for Vice Mayor and Mr. Cromwell, you guys deal with construction all the time, so, is it conceivable that by moving the library from, from the current location to the Borders Building, have the general contractor in there able to do all of his work, is there potentially the opportunity, construction y'all have been around about saving, saving money to get the project down?
Yeah.
I mean, I sit and look at it, you know, from a standpoint of safety and everything else that goes along with it. I sit and look at it, you know, from a standpoint of safety and everything else that goes along with it. It seems to me it kind of makes some sense here. But is, is there potentially some cost savings being able to do this to justify the moving of, you know, the library to a different location?
Yeah, I definitely think so. I'm sure Aaron will chime in. But every time I'm given a project where I have to work around people, the costs are always higher because of the extra care and time it takes to work around people, let alone the environmental and, and, you know, potential exposure issues that occur.
I, I would always charge more money to, if, if there is this sort of situation. So yeah, I, we don't know exactly what the savings will be, but I, there will be savings.
You torture your help and you torture your customers too.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
And in this case, you take, you put your collections at risk too, from extra movements, from dust, dirt. And it's just, it's not a good scene. I've been through that scenario in my own business, trying to shut down and work around people. And it's about drove everybody crazy, so.
It's a good deal.
Any other questions? If not, let's move on with a motion here or some such action.
So Mayor, I would authorize, move to authorize staff to execute a lease agreement with, for the former Borders Building at 700 New Hampshire for the temporary relocation of Lawrence Public Library operations during construction.
Second.
Move Dever second.
Carter.
Carter.
What's his name?
Yeah.
Baldi.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Carries five zero. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to consider awarding bid number 1243 for the rollout of Residential Kart Implementation Program to the RIG Pacific Company in the amount of $885,490 and consider approving a three-tier rate structure and direct staff repair the 2013 Solid Waste Rate Ordinance. Anything any better than that?
Okay. My name is Tammy Bennett, Assistant Director of Public Works, and I will try to be brief tonight. We've talked about this a couple of times before, so I were just bringing it back to you for the culmination. This initiative started with the Solid Waste Task Force. The Solid Waste Task Force brought recommendations to you in February and one of, or in January, I guess. One of the recommendations focused on increasing automation for residential trash, whoops. Increasing the automations for residential trash by providing the rollout carts and then replacing our, increasing our automation of trucks as we have fleet replacements. So we've got the semi-automated tippers on all our current rearload fleet. If we have rollout carts, we can utilize that semi-automated fleet immediately. So we will recognize the benefits of that as soon as we get carts on the street. We talked about carts in early, or late spring, early summer. At that point, you authorized us to go ahead and send out the bids and get pricing for that. We followed up in July, a little bit more conversation about some employee feedback and our rate recommendations. Again, the primary driver for the cart system is employee safety, worker safety. Our work comp costs are expensive, certainly in dollars to the city. They're also personally expensive to our employees as they do that hard work, day in and day out, all year. Depending on whether you calculate it, there are two methods of calculating work comp, once by year of injury and once by year the expenses is incurred. But either way, it's six or $700,000 over the last two years, which is a pretty good chunk.
Is that 201, is that AD or BC? Or is that 2011?
Whoops. I was just going to fill it in as I. You were on the commission.
The costs have been kind of consistent over the years, haven't they?
Not too bad.
All about the same. Sorry. Good, good catch there. So with worker safety in mind, we opened bids on the rollout carts. The low bid was from RIRIC Pacific. That is a company that manufactures their 65 and 95 gallon carts in De Soto. The low bid is $885,000, $885,490. I didn't say that right. Got it. The rate recommendation, as we have talked about, the base rate, which is the same as our sanitation rate is right now. So the majority of customers will not experience any change in their, in their solid waste rates in 2013. $1494 is the base rate. It would include now a 65 gallon cart, the rollout residential cart. If someone is renting a 65 gallon cart now, it's $1.50 a month, that will come off their bill. So their bill, if they're already renting a 65 gallon cart, their bill would decrease. The 90 or 95 gallon cart, currently people that rent that, it's $2 a month. The rate recommended here is a dollar over the base. So it would also be a decrease for those customers unless they are renting multiple carts. For the 35 gallon cart, we've recommended a monthly rate of $1444, which is a reduction of 50 cents from our current monthly rate, plus we're adding the cart. And then there are a couple of other fees for people that want more carts. If they have a higher volume of trash, now we are trying to capture the capitalization of the cart and the landfill fee for the, for the whole cart at $3 a month for 65, for the second 65 gallon container. And $4 a month for the second 90 gallon container. And we're talking about, and we have the replacement fee there of $50 for those rare incidents where people, where the cart gets destroyed or more likely where someone moves and takes it with them to another community. Want to try to capture those costs. Our next step, one of the reasons it's really important to get approval tonight to move on is we are ready to publish The Flame, which will go out in the September newsletter. That deadline is this week. So we, we've got the article ready to go if you have approved. If not, we will rewrite it in whatever ways are appropriate. We have, are ready to do a kickoff meeting with, with the contractor for the low bid. And from there, it's just a very comprehensive outreach and education program. The utility bill insert, you guys see the kind of same outreach we typically do. We'll do the utility bill message area. We've got the webpage. We're developing a, a one-page frequently asked question sheet. The Woohoo Forum, which will be on our website where people can, can take action to request either a smaller or a larger cart that would be easily on the website. We'll have our Channel 25. We'll do paid advertising. And then we do have that cool one-minute video that you guys didn't get to see very well last time. If you'd like to see it, it's 1 minute 39 seconds. Great. If not.
Sure, let's see. We're not doing anything else.
While you're setting that up, in one place it said 90 gallons and another said 95. Is it 90?
Yeah, I will tell you, we use, it's 95 with this vendor. And we, we've always called it 90 because there is some variability between manufacturers. This, this vendor.
We trash collect junk for all residents within the city limits. Currently, the city accepts residential trash placed at the curb in a variety of ways. Carts, cans, bags, and boxes. Our current collection method is physically demanding and has led to ongoing injuries. In 2010 and 2011, workers' compensation claims from the Solid Waste Division were almost half of the city's combined total cost. Each day, solid waste loaders visit 475 homes in Lawrence, which averages over 1,425 stops per week for each loader. The average amount of weight picked up by a residential loader daily is 7,500 pounds. For one work week, three days of residential collection, this equals 22,500 pounds for 11 and 1/4 tons. The Solid Waste Task Force is recommending that the city work toward increasing automation and expanding the city provided carts for residential customers' traction disposal. Collecting trash set out of cars offers many benefits to our customers, solid waste loaders, and the government.
Trash, sometimes the trash is vacated, you know, kind of out of peace. Or the polycart, all we have to do is pull over to the truck, hook it onto the lid, make it in, hold this stuff on the side of the truck. Truck will essentially pick up the polycart, dump it into the back of the truck. Just push it, press it, bring it back down, plus the, just like that, back to curb.
Worker's safety is a top priority for the city. The city's current fleet of trucks is equipped with tippers that lift and dump carts. Other communities using cart-based systems have dramatically reduced injuries to employees, which also decreased workers' compensation claims.
That's good.
Chuck, can you shut that part down? Just the screen? I just had one more slide, which is the action requested tonight, which is to award bid 1243 for the Residential Rollout Cart Implementation Program to RIRIC Pacific Company up to $885,490 for 2012. And then the second part is to approve the general three-tier rate structure and direct staff to prepare the 2013 Solid Waste Rate Ordinance accordingly. That will still come back to you.
Questions?
Yeah, I, you can go ahead.
If we could get the rate recommendation slide up, probably be. Just a couple. There we go. I guess, first of all, thanks Tammy and everybody over at Solid Waste Department for all their hard work on this and to the Solid Waste Task Force for, you know, blood, sweat, and tears throughout this whole process. And this is, this is the number one recommendation out of Solid Waste Task Force is, is the carts for the obvious reasons of workman's compensation savings and just really just bringing us into the 21st century of solid waste collections in Lawrence. Question that I've got though on the rate recommendations is what do you think the economic neutrality would be of taking the 90 gallon cart rate and increasing it a dollar and decreasing the 35 gallon cart a dollar?
I, I don't know what the economic neutrality of that, that would be. In the budget that we've submitted so far, we already recognized that a decrease of about 138, 168,000, something like that, $168,000 that we will not be getting in cart rental this year. We have 7,000 carts on the street right now. Of those, probably 80% are in that 90 gallon range. So if we change what our plan is for that, it may really affect the numbers of carts that we have to provide if it's a.
Just from, I think from a point of view of kind of what we were trying to accomplish and what the discussions that we've had in, in this body as well and the, the feedback we've had from the community, the lower, reducing the cost of the lower-sized cart is, is an ideal thing. Decreasing, having a rate that actually lowers it by a dollar for the largest cart, you know, doesn't seem to match up with that sort of same, you know, our, our goals. And so by, you know, by having that, keeping that rate at the rate that these folks are paying it already, there's no impact to those families. But those people who are able to go with a smaller cart will see a decrease and that's what we're trying to encourage. And that's, that's, I guess, where I'm, where I'm trying to go with that. And I just wanted to make sure, but I want to make sure, I mean, I think intuitively that makes sense. I think if anything, that will actually generate more revenue for the Solid Waste Department instead of less because obviously there's going to be more 90 gallon carts out there. It's not like these people are going to be punished. They're still paying the same rate they were paying last year when you include the, the rental of their cart plus the solid waste fee. If we just keep that the same and that way we're able to, to offer a little bit of a discount to those people who are exhibiting the behaviors that we want to encourage.
As you know, from the Solid Waste Task Force, there were a couple of things we learned from other communities. And one was that people, in, in other communities, they've had the experience that people tend to underestimate the type, the size of trash they have. And a lot of people we have talked to discouraged that 35 gallon container at the front end because people tend to underestimate their amount. And you negate the automation benefits if they're setting out the 35 gallon container plus some. Or you have, or you could risk, some communities have had problems with illegal dumping, you know, using the downtown at least more because they want to save that money. A lot of communities have been able to make it work and if that's the way we're, you know, we'll make it work too. The other, the other piece of information we've gathered, and we need to do a lot more rigorous data collection. But one of the things we talked about in July is we've done some sampling, we did some sampling in March and we did some sampling in June of, of weights at the curb. And our primary cost driver is getting the truck and the people to the curb. The weights at the curb are not quite as different. So we were estimating they were very different, but between 45 and 65 cents was, was kind of the difference between the small container and the large container. If you did an annual or a monthly average, just based on the landfill, that's the landfill cost. Now, if you're talking about encouraging behaviors through a rate structure, that's your realm. And I will step back.
I, yeah, and I appreciate that. I, I do understand that probably more than I wish I did. But that's, you know, that's what you get for sitting in the hot seat. The question though is, I mean, we have some sort of an idea and you've presented some, some conceptual, you know, basis for how we could roll out this idea of the 35 gallon carts and not doing it right away and basically saying, you can only do this if, you know, if it's not abused. And if it's abused, then it's going to be taken away. And there's some sort of policy would have to be written, obviously, because I, yeah, I remember all the discussions, a lot of different communities. And everyone wants, I want, I save a couple of bucks by getting this cart. And then they, you know, put bags all over the place. And we just want to be able to have a policy that says, no, you can't do that. This is for the actual, the person who really does just need that cart. Maybe a couple of times a year they, they go over, just like, you know, everybody does if, you know, certain times, you know, some relatives come to visit or who knows. But for the most part, yeah, they, you know, some sort of a policy, I think, should be able to handle that. And we're not talking about saving, you know, $30 or, I don't know, it's, it's still only a few dollars. But I think it could be significant enough to, you know, again, get at that rewarding behavior aspect, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Cromwell bringing it up because that was exactly where I was going to hit on the dollar that we were able to reduce the 35 gallon rollout cart to a, another dollar off that at 1344. You know, one of the things that's important here is that, you know, I've thought is that as, as you go around and you look at, you know, there's, there's a number of people that are, are doing their own recycling. There's others, you know, who have hired some of the firms that we have that are doing recycling here in town. So they're doing their job in, in, in reducing what we're sending to landfill, or they just don't generate a whole lot of stuff to go to the landfill. So I, I think, you know, from, from what I see, nothing scientific about this at all, but there is a lot of people doing, doing what they're, they're, they're supposed to be doing. And I think, you know, the truth of the matter is, is given a deal on the 90, 90 gallon rollout cart is not where we really want to be. We want to do the incentive that's going to encourage people to go out and, 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 you know, create a situation where they're not sending a whole lot of stuff to landfill anymore. And I think, you know, here again, it's going on that way. So if we can give a better deal on the 35 gallon cart than, than we would on the 90 gallon cart, it seems to me that that makes all the sense in the world. The biggest thing that we can't do though is that we can't create a problem for our solid waste division, you know, financially and end up in a bad situation, you know, in, in our program that we're running now because we've got a very good, you know, program in dealing with solid waste. So, you know, I, I, I think that the, the question that Commissioner Cromwell asked about what effect it's going to have on, on the budget, you know, is a very good one. And if it's going to create a shortfall, we need to understand that also, you know, as we look at this three-tier deal.
Yeah.
Well, basically, just the, I mean, you really got to think about too, the, and I think Tammy brought it up, this, it's, it's not the size, only the size of the cart. You've got a lot of infrastructure in play to get the truck to the, each home. And really, the tipping cost, I think, is what, 1.2 cents a pound at the, at the landfill?
I haven't calculated it per pound.
I think that's approximately right. So, you know, how much difference is the 35 gallon container in weight going to be from the 95 gallon? And then that's, that's your true differential in terms of cost. It costs the same amount to send the truck and workers out to each house to pick up the, the refuse. But, you know, and I, I can see also the fact you want. the refuge, but, you know, and I can see also the fact you want to, because both people recycle, and you do that by the carat. But the real cost thing, if you're looking at it from just a cost perspective, and so we keep our books even at the sanitation department, it's the cost differential between the, at the tipping fee between each size container.
If I heard right, that was the 45 to 50 cents is the difference between a 35-gallon and the 90.
Right, between 45 and 65 cents is what we know, but we have very limited data. And one of the things that we want to stress over and over is, this is, we'll be back to talk about this again. And as we move into a variable rate pricing structure, we want to have some really great data that we can replicate and is meaningful, and next year we can tell you, you know, of the people out there using the 35-gallon container, we know this is the average weight, and we know this is the average weight on the 65, and we know this is the average weight on the 95. So we can get a much better rate structure next year that really reflects the landfill costs. The other thing that is important, and I know I harp on this, so let me apologize in advance for continuing, but that solid waste rate structure also pays for some of our recycling programs and all the other programs that people use, like our household hazardous waste and the fiber drop-off. So it's not just what they're putting at the curb that we're capturing in that cost.
All right. Just follow-up on that. Another question is the, where we're saying they're saving a dollar, that's just people who have, already are renting a cart from us. The majority don't rent a cart, though, correct?
That's correct.
So for the majority of people who have a 90, you know, putting out larger amounts, this is not going to be a savings in any way for them. It's just that the rate doesn't change.
That's correct. And we're really hoping for those large generators that don't use a cart now, that we have a rate structure that gets them into the right size. Because having the right-size cart will benefit us the most from the automation perspective.
And I think at the last time we talked, we were talking about the staff would be able to have a good idea, perhaps, of those that we know would fit into a 35-gallon. Can you just comment, are we planning to do that?
Yes. Well, first of all, people that call in and say, "We really want a 35-gallon," we'll put them on the list. We'll talk to our drivers to make sure they're not, you know, known heavy generator, and we'll put the 35-gallon out there, and then we'll monitor. And as we will with the 65, you know, if they have a 65 out there and are routinely going over during this right sizing period, we'll get it swapped out for the right size. But our supervisors are already brainstorming. They have a good idea of a starter list of people that they know are cases that we're already going up to the garage and getting. Those hardship cases or people with disabilities that we're already doing, those might be great candidates for the 35-gallon cart. Our people on the low-income elderly rate may be great candidates for that low, or for the 35-gallon cart, and certainly some avid recyclers.
Sure, yeah. Well, thanks. I think you've done a great job with this, and like you said, because we're going to be back to it. We're going to have to be back to right size over a little time here.
So I've got a couple of questions, sorry. So you talked about the waste costs, the tipping costs between 45 and 65 cents or something along those lines. What was the number again, your estimate?
It was between 45 and 6, one was 45 and one was 65, depending on which method we used.
And was that based on the, was that based on the weight? Or did you guys calculate, for example, if we do generate less waste, that we would make less trips to the landfill and the time associated with those trips?
It was, it was based strictly, absolutely, where you're going is absolutely right. If, overall, if everybody is putting out less waste, in the long run, we will be able to get more homes on a truck, more, more capacity. That didn't calculate that. It was strictly a, here's the scale, here's the weight of this one, here's the weight of that one.
And that's where the biggest cost, I think, in the long term is going to be when we're talking about fuel and man-hours to transport that waste and not having to go to the landfill as many times. So, you know, there's other costs that aren't being calculated that I know we're going to see reductions if we do incentivize the smaller containers and incentivize the recycling concept, even if the city's not responsible for it. So, I mean, there's going to be benefits, even though the solid waste is, the dumping or the tipping fee is one aspect that I was, just want to make sure that wasn't, including those other ancillary costs. Okay. So I had a couple of calls, some questions, and I think I've asked these before, but I think it needs to be restated this evening. Those carts that are already provided by the city and on the streets will not be recalled and disposed of, correct?
That is correct. If somebody has a cart now, they will keep that cart, we won't touch it.
Okay.
It's only if you are a single-family rate payer and you do not have a cart now, you will get a cart.
So there's no going out, replacing carts that are already on the street?
Absolutely not.
Okay. To, what about the people who want, who want to take us up on our offer and use these great carts? Will the vendor take the old waste containers if they don't want to use them for yard waste or other types of use? In other words, they don't have space for additional cans, they're going to get a new one from us. Are we going to provide a systematic way for them to properly recycle those containers?
We will provide a systematic way for them to properly recycle the containers. As part of the bid, the vendor will take the material, but we have not asked the vendor to pick it up curbside. So we haven't asked them to go door-to-door and pick up someone's old trash cans. We will set out a process where our crews collect them, be on some Fridays. After all the carts get delivered, we'll collect them, we will move them to a central location. If we can find good uses for some of the cans that are still in good shape, or maybe other people that want to use them for yard waste, we'll do that. And the ones that we can't find better uses for, the vendor will recycle either the plastic and will go back into the cart manufacturing process, or the metal cans will get recycled as well.
Okay, so you will provide those opportunities, we will provide those opportunities, and we'll publicize that process as well?
Yes, absolutely.
And then the other question was, will you help people figure out where to put the cans? We talked about this previously, and I want to make sure that that's clear.
Absolutely. And we've already started that process. We've gotten a lot of calls this week with this being on the agenda. Our supervisors have gone out and talked to people. They've done some troubleshooting. There are some, there are some odd little niche areas where our truck can't get in, and they've had questions about carts. And we have someone here tonight that has questions about the carts, and we're going to meet with those people individually, figure out what their situation is, and make it work. I mean, our, our staff is really, really proud of the quality of customer service they give, and they do not want to see that go down at all. We're going to be here to make this transition as easy as it can be for everybody.
And can the residents use the carts or the cans they have for their yard waste needs?
Yes. Yard waste, yard waste collection will not change at this time. You can still do cans, carts, and compostable bags. We will encourage people to reuse the rollout cart for yard waste if it works for their families. Some families, it doesn't. And we may develop a, another tier where someone could purchase a specific yard waste cart that rolls out and is similar, like we, like we work with our compost bins and kitchen pails.
Okay. And then finally, since we do such a great job of doing our yard waste and not accepting waste, which is improperly containerized already, we do that, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do the same thing with people who are putting out extra bags. I mean, we, we have to deal with that on a regular basis, not, maybe not nearly as many users, but I think if we're talking about trying to minimize the amount of waste that the collectors have to go pick up, bend over, carry over, pick up debris from animals, I mean, there's ways for us to, I mean, you guys are doing a great job of informing the consumer as to what is an appropriate way of putting out their waste with the yard waste currently. So I think these guys are skilled, ladies are skilled at what they do, and there's probably not any reason why we couldn't somehow use a stick to make sure people are right sizing their containers and not, you know, taking advantage of a system where they get a cart for less money and, for some reason, they start throwing a bunch of bags on the street next to the container. I mean, I don't see that being a problem. I know our system can, can solve that problem. So I'm also just going to say I'm in favor of trying to figure out a different rate system, if possible. So, anyway, sorry, but those are all phone calls we got this week.
What else? Let's take some public comment this time. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Teri Masuri. I had actually no intention of being here and speaking, but it's for a college course I'm taking that I had to come and observe you all. But this subject here just interested me because just as a resident, looking at these charts, charges, you know, a dollar fifty cents, doesn't matter. It really doesn't. Personally, we use our own containers, and I think the idea to punish someone for using a smaller container and then they set garbage in bags, that's the nature of the person. The only way you're going to get that to change is to educate the people on recycling. A lot of people move to Lawrence and have no idea about recycling, where to do it, how to do it, what's recyclable. I think you presented a real, she, I thought that was a great presentation, and I think it makes sense. I don't think money's the issue as a homeowner. Those costs aren't significant enough to think, "Oh, gosh, I could save a dollar." It really doesn't. If I'm the kind of person that's going to garbage, put my trash in a garbage bag and put it alongside my bin, that, you know, that's the kind of person. I think it comes into educating the person on recycling community, what's best for the workers. The sanitation workers, by the way, are wonderful. They love my dogs. So I think on this end, everything looks good. I mean, she presented everything, makes sense. I think the issue comes to education on recycling and not punishing. Nobody's going to care about that. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Katie Walsh, just speaking for myself. My concern is the $50 charge for damaging or destroying or, you know, which is great, and I think we need that. And here's my issue. Plastic holds odors. We all know that. We had a party recently, and we had to move the city containers a couple houses down from, you know, for three houses because the smell is so rank. This only applies to houses where your containers are outside. Other people may be able to protect them from the heat and the cold, so especially people with alleys who have their containers outside. So for years, what I've always done is drilled holes in the bottom of my trash cans, and I do it for friends, too. And it takes all those juices out, it drains the rain, you know, should you not put the lid on your container. I feel bad if the crews have to dump rain in. That's just added weight. But it helps a lot with the odor, and so my concern was, if I do that, will I get charged $50? So, just a question. Thank you.
Other comments? Do you want to respond to that?
Do you want an answer?
Sure.
We'll figure it out. I don't know that exact answer at the moment. Really, we're, we're targeting there the can that disappears, that becomes unusable for the next resident. If you have a can at your house and you drill a hole in the bottom, we're probably not going to come investigate that right away for a while. It would be on a, it would be on a complaint basis.
I would like to suggest we form a committee to investigate trash can alterations.
Right. But we do have...
I want to, I'll chair that department.
The alley, please.
We have, we have occasional times when people, when they've gotten destroyed, like one was destroyed this year by fireworks, or, or people literally, like, they moved to another town and they take them with them. That's what we're targeting, not making the cart usable for you.
Thank you. I don't think that would be a problem. Other comments? All right. Back to the City Commission to determine the future of solid waste in Lawrence, Kansas.
I'm confident that what I suggested is not going to put us in any sort of trouble. We have way more 90-gallon carts than we're going to have 35-gallon carts, and so by switching those, that dollar around, and that it's not going to negatively impact the department.
Okay.
That's all.
So your, your recommendation is stated in terms of each cart and what the dollar amount is, please.
$14.94 per month for 65 gallons. The 90-gallon would be $16.94. The 35-gallon would be $13.44. And then the additional, that's all fine.
$13.44 is a dollar and a half less than what it's scheduled now.
Right. I'm just dropping the dollar off the one and...
Right. Well, because someone wanted to do two, so I'm just trying to get it.
Five.
Yeah. Five?
We can drop it.
So, so you're at, sorry, $14.94, $16.94, and $13.44, correct? Other recommendations or thoughts?
I think, I think it is. I mean, you know, the suggestion, you know, the last time we met, you know, five, pick a number, it didn't, it didn't matter. But this one at least, you know, staff's recommendation on, on the three-tier system, you know, any kind of incentive that I think that we can personally do on the 35-gallon, I think is exactly that. I can agree to the $13.44 recommended by Commissioner Cromwell. It'd be fine.
Fine, $17,000, 65 gallons, is that right?
Yep.
$1,000.
$1,000.
$1,035 gallons.
And $3,000 of the 90. Let's make sure they know it's 95 gallons instead of 90, that extra. They're also getting a little bigger cart. And then we're still looking, though, as far as right sizing and whatnot, that's, okay. I'm good with that.
So we need to approve bid, bid number 1, 2, 4, 3. Is there a motion for the bid, first of all?
Motion made.
Second. Cromwell, second quarter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. That carries 5-0. And then the rate schedule, I'll let Commissioner Cromwell make that motion since it's his big idea.
I'd like to, to make a motion to approve the rate recommendation as, as I stated it one moment ago here, I think. Do we have, Jonathan, are you, you've got that?
$16.94 for the largest cart, which is a 95-gallon, $14.94 for a 65-gallon cart, and $13.44 for a 35-gallon rollout cart. Moved by Cromwell, second by Amex. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries 5-0.
Thanks, Tammy.
It was a good, it was a good thing, too, there was a local, you know, we got a local company. That's fantastic, too. I really liked it. I was hoping that they would get it. We, we knew that they were in the area.
Buy that trashy agenda item.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
And then the staff prepare the 13 solid waste rate ordinance, and it'll be back later. Well, Dave will staff...
Can you give the ordinance in the letter of the legislature?
Got it.
Public comment.
We're going to go ahead and proceed with the progressive public education based on our initiative. It's a lot of, lot of work, and I think what we learn from other communities, that's going to be a key, because there are people that are used to that.
Right. Okay, next item is a public comment. Any member of the public wish to make a public comment at this time? Seeing no one who would like to publicly comment, we'll now look at the future agenda items.
See the memo there? Still working on some of the Sports Village and Recreation Center items. Probably likely to have most of those items on, you're meeting on the 28th. Probably likely to have most of those items on, you're meeting on the twenty-eighth, given some of the work that we have accomplished to date. But we still have advertised the comprehensive plan amendment, prefer it to be on your agenda next week, so it will be on your agenda next week. We may want to then just continue it to the twenty-eighth, going to work on that. But we have had good progress on a lot of those items. I think Michael Aglinsky's got a couple of reports that he wants to have on next week, so Mayor will, will talk about that as well. And now that we've got the, got the budget completed, we'll start working on a lot of these other items that we've got on your future agenda's memo.
Is next week a good time for the transfer policy?
Could be. I mean, we'll talk, if you're ready for it, we'll put it on.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Get it done, because it looks like we've got some time.
No.
We indicated we'd get to that right away, so.
Might want to wait, I mean, on the, the debt guidelines, I know that Ed was working on that, we're going to have a bond sale, I think it's the first meeting in September, we may want to wait and just kind of have all of that, because I think one of Commissioner Carter's questions was, well, what's, what are we getting for our, our rates? Well, we'll know what our rates are when we go to the bond market, so that'd be maybe timely to have, get more of those type of questions, what can we get for certain dollar amounts? But I think that that's been worked on as well, so.
Okay, questions? Any commission items this evening? I have one, there was, I thought there was a bit of confusion last Tuesday night on the budget. Commissioner Carter recommended a ten thousand dollar grant or monetary payment to the Lawrence Children's Choir. It was during the discussion of the budget, Commissioner Cromwell spoke in favor of it, and then no one else talked about it. In the motion, we didn't specifically approve or disapprove of it, and it was, was kind of out there in, in limbo. So I don't know if everyone is of the opinion that we approved it last Tuesday night, or if it, it needs to have a second, separate vote, or how, how that went down, because I only heard one other person say they were in favor of it, and that kind of leaves us, unless you felt that the budget vote was, it was implicit in that vote that the funding would take place.
I thought it was included, but, nah, just because there wasn't anybody that was against it.
Was that your sense of what happened?
Yeah, I think so, I think by, you know, if you're against it, I presume everybody was in favor of it.
That's what I thought too.
I, I was of the opinion it was included in the, in the overall discussion, although it wasn't singularly stated at the end. And I just had somebody in the public say, well, I see you didn't pass that. And I thought, well, I don't know, I thought we did, but that was kind of a strange situation. So then if it's the, if we're all in agreement that we did pass it, we don't need to have any other kind of action.
That is all we want then.
Okay, very good. Anything else for Commissioners?
No, sir.
All right. And meetings?
The, I, yeah, the question about the good neighbor distribution that is going to happen on Thursday then?
Yes.
Thursday, we're meeting at ten. If Commissioners are interested, if you would let me know, I can contact, there are individuals assisting in that, will have identification, so there will be arrangements in the cabinet tag. We're meeting at the Beta House at ten o'clock.
Okay. I don't know yet, but I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Was that the sixteenth, Tom?
Sort of the sixteenth.
Yes.
Anything else on calendar? Well, once again, so.